I'd like to call the Johnson County Board of Education meeting to order for May 22, 2017. First order of business, anybody to recognize today?
Well, Mr. Halsey, talk about just a moment, the accomplishments of our track team to state competition, and if you'd like to do that very quickly.
I'd be glad to, Mr. Sayer. This past Friday and Saturday, of course, our track and field girls and boys traveled to the horse park and competed in the state track and field activities. And Marcus Wells was state champion in shot put. Josh Irving was state runner-up in disc, just about two inches. And Becca Preston finished seventh in the 100 meters. And we had some other kids medal in whatever individual events. Overall, the boys finished eighth in the state, highest overall team finish ever. And the girls finished 22nd. So, you know, they had an outstanding wrap-up. We come away with the state champion, state runner-up, and several of our student athletes medaled at the state this weekend. And that didn't wrap up until late Saturday. So, but, you know, if you see those guys, or if you see Randy Ward, Coach Ward, you know, let them know we appreciate their efforts and proud of those kids.
Any other updates from anybody?
No, it's about all we've got going on, other than district softball starts tonight. We play right here, starting right now, and then district baseball begins tomorrow night at 5:30, and then we continue softball Wednesday night, 7 o'clock, a league championship game, and the same thing on Thursday for baseball, so, very good.
I'd like to get a motion to approve April 24th and May 2nd special call meeting, May 15 special meeting, and build some payroll through May 18, 2017.
So made.
Motion's made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made, second, any discussion? If there'll be no discussion, we'll call for a vote. All in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Renovation report, Mr. Adams?
We'll take A. I'm gonna let Kevin talk to you a little bit about the drawings for middle school and for Central Elementary, so I'm gonna turn it over to Kevin at this time.
What I wanted to do tonight, we're here tonight with CMTA Energy Solutions. As you recall, the board elected to go with an energy savings contract across the whole district. Tonight, this is a little different beast than what you may be used to doing when you talk about delivery for construction projects, because underneath an energy savings contractor is not a true schematic design. However, in talking with both Mr. Sayer, Mr. Adams, and of course you all, we wanted to make sure you understood the architectural scope in greater detail and were in line or would approve or feel comfortable with the way they're going underneath the energy savings contract to include these architectural items. Once we do this, we will take this back, Energy Solutions will take it to KDE and get their grace and their blessing on including the scope within the part of their energy savings contract. There's two different projects or scopes of work that are really the architectural focus of a much, much larger energy savings contract. These items are being funded through the energy savings contract, which I think is very important, because that means that none of your restricted money is being spent on this. It's all being funded by the energy savings, which is a good plus. And these are things that are very much in need. One of these is the middle school restrooms. If you've been in those restrooms, you can appreciate the need there. It's time to get those cleaned up and get those taken care of. Spend a lot of time above ceiling and behind doors, chases, whatever I could, and I can tell you, this is gonna be a much-needed renovation to those toilet rooms. The second project we're gonna talk about tonight will be, over at Central Elementary, you have what at one time was state-of-the-art pod classrooms, open classroom concept. As you know, all across the state, that was an educational model that developed out on the west coast, in the San Francisco area, made its way into Kentucky, and never has worked well. A lot of schools have gone back and subdivided those, and that's what this is. This is to go back and turn those classrooms into individual classroom units, away from that open concept, to help the teachers with the sound, all the distraction of having four classrooms in one open area. So the first one we'll look at tonight is the actual middle school. In the middle school, you'll see you've got multiple classrooms, and I didn't show the classrooms, because where we're focused tonight is on those toilet rooms. We've got the toilet rooms at this end of the building, this end, and then we've got a bank of toilet rooms up at the main front entrance. These two toilet rooms here and here basically stack the same toilet arrangement above and below. They were done at two different times, so they are different, and those stack. So we're gonna renovate both, the second floor and the first floor toilet rooms. The way we propose to do this is, we've looked at and talked over with Mr. Adams, how we can do that in one bank at a time, but we gotta do them stacked. So we're gonna do one end of the building, get those taken care of, and then move the contractor to the next end of the building, get those taken care of, and then wrap up that front one by the main lobby as well. When we look at these, what we've done is we've gone back and we said, okay, this is on the far left-hand end. We wanted originally, and you may remember, I talked about trying to get an airport-style entry in there. The issue with an airport-style entry, although ideal, the problem with an airport-style entry is, is that we've got custodial closets that are chock-full of mechanical electrical items. There's some main electrical items in here around this room. There's also a large storm drain here that's a main roof leader from the roof above. We've got a trench access in the center of this, and some of these walls are low-bearing. So what we said was, look, we're not gonna be able to get that, but we can improve the access. Those are very tight toilet rooms. If you tried to go in there, if there's kids coming out and you're going in, there's not much room. In fact, they do not meet current ADA code. So we're taking those rooms, and what we're gonna do on this bank is we're gonna take the set of doors here, and we're gonna move those that were located here, we're moving them out to this location in both areas to give us some more buffer room, so the wheelchairs can get in and out of there, where we've got full ADA accessibility. We'll come back in then, and when we've got the entire room, provide new chases, all new finishes. We're gonna work with the engineers to get proper ventilation supply and outside air so that we, and exhaust, so that we can get that room ventilated proper. I think that's part of the problem now, there's some humidity issues, we talked about that. If you go in there, the grid's rusting, and in some places, it's actually fallen through. So we're gonna get all that remedy and provide all new floor finishes throughout and wall finishes. Another thing we're gonna do is we're gonna address those windows. We talked about it, those tend to be problematic for safety, security, and discipline. So we're gonna take and make that a spandrel glass window and infill that window, so from the outside of the building, there's no difference in appearance, but from the inside, we'll no longer have an exterior window that the kids can tamper with, open up, you know, take stuff in and out, whatever they're doing. So we'll get that fixed as well. The ceilings, we'll go back in with a vinyl clad jip board, which is a very high abuse-resistant jip board type ceiling, lays a ceiling grid, but the nice thing about it, it's washable, it's cleanable, we can actually do something with that if we need to. The flooring would be epoxy resin. We'd take the epoxy resin floor, take the epoxy resin floor all the way out, in other words, this whole entire area would receive a new epoxy resin floor, which is a seamless flooring, much like you see in restaurants. I'm sure some folks have seen those, it's a flake system, very easy to clean, very easy to maintain, and there's no joints for any kind of soaking in or any odors to get embedded into the grout joints. The wall tile, we'll go back and put a wall tile, but we'll do a smooth wall tile, you kinda got a wavy tile, we'll put a smooth wall tile, and we'll take that wall tile and make it a six-by-six to try to eliminate some grout joints there, too. One point we talked about, we talked about a larger format tile, I'm concerned about the condition of some of the existing walls, making that level and avoiding lippage. So I'd much rather work with a six-by-six in there, and then of course, new lighting throughout. One of the questions that has come up, and I'm sure is a concern for everybody, is a fixture count. On that end of the building, each of the toilet rooms had five girls' toilets, three sinks, two boys' toilets, four urinals, and three boys' sinks. Underneath this, we have to meet code. Your ADA restrooms right now do not meet ADA. They've got grab bars, but grab bars just doesn't make it ADA. You gotta have more than that. So we're coming back, and we're proposing to do partitions as opposed to masonry. Wish I could do masonry. In new construction, we do masonry partitions. We don't have the room here to get that in. So we're gonna utilize a standard toilet partition, but we're gonna do an overhead and floor mount for security reasons. It's gonna go up above structure and mount the steel, not just be tacked to a ceiling grid. We're gonna take it, penetrate the ceiling, put a nice steel mount up there, and then take it to the floor and mount that down, so we've got good, stable partitions. Now my material there, we're gonna investigate that and talk with Tim some more, I wanna get him some samples. There's solid phenolic, there is a solid resin, and there's also stainless steel. Each one of those has its advantages and disadvantages. Phenolic, once they start scratching through that first layer surface, you got the scratches. In the solid resin, or the solid plastic-type material there, they can still scratch it, but at least it's through color. The stainless steel, however, is really easy to work with, but it scratches, too. Once they find out they can scratch it, it seems like they then have a heyday with it. So we wanna get you all some samples and let him make a decision, and at this point, we don't need to know that, we can make that in just a few days after we look at those samples. So the good news is, is we're gonna end up with four girls' toilet rooms, or toilet stalls. We'll have the ADA, of course, part of that. The sink, we're going to go, here you may notice the sink symbol there, that is a large Bradley-style sink that's easy to maintain. You know, you walk up, it's got the three heads on it, you got one sink to deal with as opposed to separate sinks. It'll be ADA accessible, have all the infrared operators on those. Then your hand dryers, we're looking at electric hand dryers at this point, to eliminate trash and trash cans in the space. We'll have all the toilet accessories in there, get rid of the floor toilet accessories that are in there now, the females, get all that taken care of. So both bathrooms will have the same finishes, and the boys will go from having the two toilets, we're gonna keep the toilets at two. And the reason being is I do not want, recommend going down to one toilet, and that's always a problem. So at least we've got two, and then we're gonna go with the two urinals. And in a minute, I'll show you how your overall fixture count is still code-compliant. In the opposite end of the building, first and second floor, very similar again, but this time, these toilet rooms have the ADA access, but again, we've got a custodial closet that we do not want to spend excess money to start trying to reopen, refeed, back panel, put new panels in. We need to keep this thing affordable. And then we'll do the same toilet, the fixture count there went down similarly, basically one per unit, but we kept the same amount of sink, and we went down for the two urinals, five to three urinals, and the boys' sinks for four to three. So we do have three at the opposite end of the building with the two toilets, but they'll be the same finishes, same work, and then outside of that, there's some drinking fountains we're gonna deal with on that one as well. So, and we're also gonna dil and replace those drinking fountains at the opposite end, much like what we're doing right now at the high school, to get you ADA compliant on the drinking fountains. Any questions about those? Moving on down to the main lobby, the main lobby, all the fixture counts, everything stayed the same there, we're just gonna update everything with high-efficiency flusher, toilets, high-efficiency plumbing units, the new finishes throughout, and make that look like a brand-new restroom. One of the things there I wanna do, and both of these, all three of these are actually all, is that five of these toilet rooms, is I want to change the tile color and pattern slightly. Variation in the color gives you some high acuity in wayfinding, in case if a student accidentally walks into the room, toilet room, and he sees, oh wow, the tile's got yellow in it or something, and he says, oh, you know, ours has gray. So we can get a breakup in that color, and maybe we do some school colors, incorporate that in there, and we can look at that later, and you'll have full reign and control over what colors we use. So that's where we're at, the overall fixture count in the whole building, we are going right now, there are 25 existing, we've got 21 new, but there's only 10 required. So you're way over count on some of these fixtures, but you need these bathrooms, because you don't want kids to have to travel so far to the opposite end. So this is what we typically see, is you've got more than enough restrooms, and we will not be non-compliant in any of those at this point, so everything looks good there. Any questions about the work at the middle school? Okay. Over at the elementary school, as you can see here in this key plan, at the elementary school, there's three pods. All three pods will be laid out the same, and what we'll do with those is we'll go from an open concept, and we'll basically, we're gonna develop a corridor that goes down the center of the open pod, and we'll subdivide these very simply into four classrooms. It's a very simple procedure. We will get new ceilings, new floor finishes, and that sort of thing coming through there. Not a whole lot there, we won't paint these rooms, but the new walls will be painted. Not an entire new finish out, unless we decide we wanna paint those and we can, we need to see what the budget does to the energy savings contract. We did do something a little different here, we opened up this front area, kinda give a visual, just kinda widen that out just a little bit, and these classrooms all meet the KDE requirement for a standard elementary school classroom with 800 square feet. I was a little concerned about how it's gonna subdivide when we meet KDE requirements for minimum, we're dead on where we need to be. We're also showing some KETs, standard KETs, wiring, drops for computers in each room, and then we also have our instructional wall, we just did a basic layout here for everybody, just to kinda see where the existing Mark or tack boards are. So that's good news, if you've got smart board technology on those walls, anything like that, that's all gonna be able to stay, and we won't have to bother that. The walls, what we're intending to do here is to do it out of jip board, but we'll do a high-impact resistant jip board. If we do masonry, that means we got to saw cut the slab up and put foundations in. We don't need to go to that for this classroom subdivision. We will do a six-inch stud wall, that is basically two, three, and five-eighths inch studs, that'll be staggered with bad insulation between it for sound. They will not be soundproof, but they'll definitely be sound-resistant, we'll take them up, the existing jip ceiling that's above the existing lay-in right now. So that will help with the sound resistance. We do that quite often, and it's very, very seldom do we have any complaints. Any questions?
I have none. Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
If there'll be, no questions, can I get approval for the schematic design for guaranteed energy savings contract?
So made.
Motion's made. Bruce Sayer, and second by Melvin. Any discussion? If there'll be no discussion, call for a vote. All in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much for that. Next, Mr. Adams?
Next, we've got the BG-1 from the guaranteed energy savings contract, and I'm gonna let Trevor Combs explain that from CMTA on how that's set up.
Next, Tim, I'd like to throw a little note, I'm Trevor Combs, I'm engineer at CMTA Solutions, developing the project scope on the energy savings side of this project. This BG-1 approval is our project application of KDE. Kevin's already mentioned two components of the scope, but the remainder of the scope that's included in this BG-1 would be replacement of coal boilers in the district to natural gas, the exception being a flat gap where we converted to propane as opposed to natural gas. There'll be LED lighting upgrades across the district. In addition to that, we'll take the existing control system, we'll expand that and convert that to a web-based system to improve its functionality. So those are the big-ticket items. There's some additional savings measures that are smaller and focused on each school. Those will be the items that will pay for the middle school and Central Elementary. So that's kinda the gist of what is included in this number for the BG-1, which is the same number and scope from our proposal two weeks ago. So if there's any questions on that, anyone have to explain it. What this BG-1 will get us is a project number and a plan review that Kevin and I can work with as we develop the project. So let's just tell KD that we're taking it.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the BG-1?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made, second, any discussion? If there'll be no discussion, we'll call for a vote. All in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Next, on the agenda, 3C, Mr. Adams?
This is the project at the Johnson Central High School that we got started, it's underway now with the sewage for the home improvement. I do ask that you approve the payments to Sherman Carter Barnhart, as everything's falling in order and we're on time, so I do ask that you approve this contract of $5,073.75.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
So made.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made, second, any discussion? If there'll be none, we'll call for a vote. All in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Item 3D, Mr. Adams?
This is the BG-4 and BG-5 to close out the Flat Gap project. We have talked with everybody, everything is completed, and everybody is working, and we do ask that you go ahead and approve our BG-4 and BG-5 to close out Flat Gap.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion's been made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made, and second, any discussion? If there'll be none, we'll call for a vote. All in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Adams. New business, Ms. Goble?
We just asked the board to approve continuation of Mark and his officer fund.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
So made.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Item 4B, Mr. Sayer?
Again, we ask you to approve employment of Kevak Pamston, who's been a reading recovery teacher here over at Central Elementary for several years, has done outstanding job with that. They want her at Kevak to be a teacher leader for our reading and recovery program. Basically, she will be coming back to Johnson County, probably Flat Gap and Highlands, to work with our teachers in reading and recovery there. That's at no cost to the board, but she was gonna be employed by us, checking, coming from, type of thing. We're excited for the opportunity that she has to go out and be a leader for this district.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
So made.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Item 4C, Ms. Goble?
I request the board to approve the 2017-18 KDC budget.
Motion to adopt.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. 4D, Mr. Sayer?
Again, we ask you to approve our 17-18 KDC membership, that's at no cost to the board.
Thank you. Motion to approve?
So made.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Next item, Ms. Goble?
We need the board to approve the capital funds transfer.
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Next, Ms. Coleman?
We're just asking the board to approve participation in the community eligibility provision again, that's what allows us to provide free breakfast and lunch to all students.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
So made.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Uh-huh. Marshall, would you like to comment just a moment about our summer feeding program and how that is working out? Would the board know that?
Absolutely. Today we got started, we kinda had to wait a little while, we had to get permission through the housing authorities and so forth. Today we started providing meals at Perry Van Hooch apartment complex, Riverview, I think it's called, over in Thelma, and then also at Sixth Street. It was very successful at Sixth Street. We had people lined up, waiting for us to get started. A lot of the kids were Central Elementary kids, and they seemed very excited. Our participation at Perry Van Hooch and Thelma wasn't quite as much as we're hoping, but obviously, you know, with the first day, once they see the bus is there, once they see us out and so forth, and get to know, I'm almost certainly confident that it's gonna pick up. We still also have the program going at the high school, Porter, Central Elementary, WR Castle, and Flat Gap. We're seeing a pretty good turnout at Flat Gap, and so I'm looking right now at possible locations out in that community, other than the schools that we could do. And WR, we're trying to get that built up a little bit more, too, but it's a work in progress, as Mr. Sayer and I have been talking about, but we just, you know, keep going, and I think that-
We think it's a growing process, and the summer goes on, and more and more kids see us out there. I would compliment both Mr. Cocklers, Tom here, Tom and Jim, both, they knocked on every door at all the different apartment complexes here last week. My was Ms. Coleman here, and Rob and Sayer, trying to get our message and thank back to our kids and our community, I know there is, so appreciate the effort they did to go make that force.
Very good. Appreciate it. Thank you. Next, Ms. Goble?
Since your last board meeting, we have had good advertisements for concessions, soft drinks, best repair parts, fuel and tires, and we just recommend, I think it's lovely per item on all of those.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve of this?
So made.
Second? Motion's made, and second, any discussion? If there'll be none, we'll call for a vote. All in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Next, Ms. Goble?
We also advertise goods for backend services, and we recommend that the board continue to contract with students back in touch.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Down, I'm standing there. Next, we've got Mr. Holberg?
I'm asking the board for permission to continue with the renewal of our school messenger software, which is basically the software we use for mass alert, education with parents and students.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
So made.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Next, we've got Mr. Sayer?
Yeah, we asked for your approval of the use of district school bus and driver for United program, that's a program that's laboring very well with us here in our district, putting people out in all our schools, so we asked you to approve for you tonight.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
So made.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries.
Does that include special Olympics and the sheriffs?
Yes.
Okay.
I was just thinking off the top of my head, I didn't open it up for you all, what I've read.
Motion to approve everybody?
Yes. Next, we've got Mr. Halsey on student trips.
Before we do student trips, softball score Eagles lead 1-0 right now.
Thank you.
Just thought I'd throw that out there. We've got four team trips, team camps, normal routine summer team camps, the boosters covered the costs of those, so it's not a cost to the board. Boys' basketball to Georgetown College, volleyball to Shawnee State, boys' basketball to KBA in Lexington, and then girls' basketball to the transit camp. We would ask you to approve those four team camps.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
So made.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Approved community use of facilities, Mr. Halsey and Mr. Pierce?
Our FCA Fellowship Christian athletes partners with the Wacon group to do the Wacon Conference. They did that last year at the high school, and it worked out really, really well, July the 20th, 21st, and 22nd, that's a Thursday through Saturday, so we would ask the board's approval. They submitted their use of facilities, they had their insurance and everything in order.
And Mr. Pierce, is that flight here, the van, or flight here at school ready?
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
So made.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Next, we have Mr. Crum?
Yeah, I'd just like to give a little update real quick on the faculty work-related skills initiative. We actually have not received any, like, written complete notice, but a press release was given on, I guess, Wednesday, maybe, I wanna say, no, it's Thursday for the, yeah, they met on Wednesday, and, but by Thursday, there was a press release that had went out indicating, and we got some verbal confirmation, that we will be receiving $1,710,000 for Johnson County schools. The specifics, like I said, I can't, till we get that in writing, we do know that it hits a lot into some of our health science, construction, technology, and our ag power welding programs, so, some much-needed equipment and things that we need from that, so by the next meeting, I'll have something, you know, very concrete to give you once we get we get everything in writing from the committee's meeting.
Thank you for that report. Appreciate it. No action necessary. Next, we've got Ms. Sauer.
This is just the certified evaluation plan. Fifty-fifty committee suggested revisions for the 2017, 2018 school year that were reflective of the Senate Bill one changes.
Thank you. Item O, Mr. Adams.
We have some items that are surplus items that we'd like to have permission to put on GoDeals.com. An example would be, we've got a van down there with the motors blown in and transmissions are not ready to go, so it's no use for us to try to fix it. But we'd like, we just have a couple kitchen items, we just ask for your permission to put those on GoDeals.com.
You had a van, Mr. Evans.
Yeah, we had a van. We had a van.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
No.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. You have the superintendent's personnel report before we go into executive session. I know some of you will be leaving. On behalf of the board, I'd like to say thank you for everything that all of you have done this year to make the experience of learning better for our students. At last, that you go out and get your family members to vote tomorrow, and of course, I'm